Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Is it clear when you please read the statement?
This is the meeting of the township of Vernon for June 9th, 2014. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public and the press on January 8th, 2014, when it was posted at the Bolton, on the Bolton Board and in the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Means Act, NJSA 10:4-7.
Who's calling?
Councilmember Cadish.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Here.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Here.
Council President Lynch.
Here. Will you please all join me with the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we're going to start off with a presentation. Will Ms. Beverly Buds please come forward from the Environmental Commission?
The Vernon Environmental Commission would like to share our vision to reinvent the Camp Sussex property while preserving its rich history. It is the commission's desire to reintroduce and restore the American chestnut back to its roots here in Vernon Township, while at the same time putting a new face on this historic property that has fallen on some very hard times. We have been in communication with the American Chestnut Foundation, and considering the camp sits on 88 acres, we believe that there is plenty of room to support a five to 10 acre restoration plot dedicated exclusively to the American chestnut, possibly allowing Vernon to be involved in the propagation and restoration program initiated by the foundation. Other species to be planted on the property would include but not be limited to the American ash and elm. These trees have been in great decline over the past years. In late 2010, the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company removed approximately 53,000 trees from our township's lands. Unfortunately, the replanting initiative by the gas company has been falling rather short, and they have been in violation of New Jersey's no net loss law more than once. Hence, another grant has been awarded to Vernon Township from the New Jersey Department of Forestry, this time in the amount of $354,960. The grant money is to be spent on reforested Vernon Township property. The pipeline company is responsible for all the replanting to be done along the right-of-way of the pipeline. This affords Vernon the opportunity to plant in town some 1,200 trees ranging in size from eight to 12 feet tall, depending on the species, and we would love to see a lot of them stand together on the camp property. We also envision areas for passive community activities, such as yoga, tai chi, and martial arts on the lawn. Or maybe you want to take the family out for a picnic in a forest setting, but you don't want to drive to Stoke State Forest or High Point State Park. Now Vernon will have its own 88-acre oasis, a place where children can run without having to wear a uniform, a place to read and reflect, a place designed just for you. Sunday's in the park, a theme a lot of towns are now promoting, bringing out the community to reconnect with neighbors and neighborhoods, getting children out of the house and off the phones. It is an easy way to encourage everyone to experience nature at its finest. It will be fun for all ages, not just for the youngsters, but for the youngster in all of us. Whether your women's organization wants to engage in an outside activity, or you just want to cut loose and fly through the air while catching a frisbee, there will be room enough for all to enjoy. And of course, it will be a place to celebrate your love for life. What a wonderful gift life is, and it should be celebrated. Having a beautiful flourish park for all in our town to enjoy is truly a gift. Maybe you are getting married, and you would like to have your wedding pictures taken someplace in Vernon. Now we will have a special place of beauty to celebrate love and life. Community projects for all ages. Maybe you're in the Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts and need a place to earn a badge, or want to initiate a planting project with the town or the Environmental Commission. We would love nothing more than to have the schools and the local gardeners groups take an interest in the grounds. These new projects will encourage local youths to learn just how valuable green is, and not the green they get from mom and dad, but the green that keeps our air clean and our water pure. FYI, a single tree will absorb 48 pounds of carbon monoxide each year and release back into the atmosphere enough oxygen to support two human beings. Over a 50-year period, one tree generates $31,250 worth of oxygen, provides $62,000 worth of air pollution control, recycles $37,500 worth of water, and controls $31,250 worth of soil erosion. Needless to say, our vision will be giving back to Vernon year after year. We can create special gardens, such as butterfly gardens. Right now, the monarch butterfly is in great danger and rapidly declining. The milkweed plant is not propagating as it once did due to a myriad of reasons. Camp Sussex just happens to be loaded with this precious resource, the only food source that the caterpillar feeds on, and we can help by starting Vernon's own project, Monarch, something I am passionate about and would love to initiate in Vernon. There are other possibilities, such as Vernon's own medicine wheel, not hard to construct, and to have one in town would be incredibly valuable, bringing all the medicinals used by our Native Americans neighbors back to the park, and all in one spot. Imagine how fascinating it would be to learn about medicinal herbs and plants used for healing right here in Vernon. It would be a place for reflection. Whether you are clearing your head or finding your inner you, the American Chestnut Park at Camp Sussex will give you a place to do just that, with zen-like areas created for peace of mind and personal enlightenment. And my favorite vision, a place for our community to celebrate a walk for life. How wonderful and precious it would be to have a virgin forest, park-like setting to rejoice and celebrate our loved ones, whether they walk next to us in victory because they beat a deadly disease, or we walk with their spirit inside our hearts and remember their courageous battles. Whatever your reason to walk, we will join together as a community and take our place among the millions of Americans as we walk for a cure. We are all potential victims of life's unpredictable hand, and we are all in this fight together. Communities that walk for a cure together send a strong message to all that no one has to walk alone. Vernon believes in shopping local, and why shouldn't we? Hidden in our town are some of Sussex County's best treasures. Whether you are looking for a one-of-a-kind gift, or you're interested in holistic remedies for a cold, Vernon has a diverse array of shops. By periodically hosting local festivals and farmers' markets at the park, we can help promote our local merchants, which benefits the community as a whole. Preserving New Jersey history. What makes a historic site? The New Jersey Historic Preservation Office and the National Criteria for Historic Sites say the following: Sites associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns in a community. Sites associated with the lives of significant persons in past or present. Sites that embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction or architecture. Or that represent the work of a master that possesses high artistic values. Sites that have yielded or may be likely to yield information important to history or prehistory. Camp Sussex fits criteria A and B. Camp Sussex was built by European immigrant Hugo Peterson in 1924. The camp was dedicated to providing underprivileged city children with fun summer experiences. Over the decades, the camp has served more than 60,000 children. Some of the children whom have benefited from Vernon's Camp Sussex were young Mel Brooks, famous film writer and comic, entertainer George Jessel, Louise Lasser, star of That 70's Show, Mary Hartman from Mary Hartman, Gabe Kaplan, the teacher on Welcome Back Cotter, Brandon Steiner of Steiner Sports. And can you imagine a very young Derek Jeter throwing his baseball around Vernon Township? Jeter's Foundation was the last group in town to own Camp Sussex. The camp property is home to a large theater and recreation hall. Both are still intact today. They are structurally in great shape and drenched in history. Maybe Mel Brooks started doing stand-up on this stage at a tender 10-years-old. When interviewed and asked how he began comedy, Mr. Brooks said he finally, he realized he was a comic from his days at Camp Sussex. Vernon Township is home to this historic diamond, which is very much in the rough right now, and the Vernon Environmental Commission believes it is time to put the shine back on it. By introducing a brand-new forest with so much to offer our town, we create a place for community gatherings, youth group projects, celebrations, festivals, craft fairs, music in the park, bird and butterfly watching, or just enjoying being among all the beautiful trees. Tonight, the Vernon Environmental Commission is fulfilling its statutory obligation, enabling legislation allows environmental commissions to make recommendations to their township officials for the planning and use of open space and to acquire property, including easements in the name of the municipality or for the betterment of the entire community. Tonight, June 9th, 2014, the Vernon Environmental Commission is recommending the acquisition of the Camp Sussex property for open space and passive recreation purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Once it got going, very well done. May I have a motion to open the floor to public comments?
Uh-oh.
Motion made by Councilmember Cadish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. The floor is open to the public.
I'd like to log the Environmental Commission on a very thoughtful presentation. As former Chair of the Environmental Commission, we've looked at this property for an awfully long time. I am in support of the acquisition. There's a bit that I don't know that I'd like to know with respect to the cost of acquisition, how much this thing is going to cost in order to just buy it without any improvements whatsoever in terms of removals or anything else.
Craig, can you speak up in the microphone?
I'm sorry. In other words, the cost to acquire, what are we talking about here? Is this the balance of the Environmental Commission or open space monies? Is that basically what we're talking about? Will this, you know, essentially tap all that is left of the open space money? I expect that it will.
I expect it wouldn't.
Well, it was a little over, last, that I knew, there was a little over $1 million in the open space account. I don't know what the cost to acquire this is. Does anyone have an answer for me?
We can ask those questions as well.
I'm generally in support of this project. I thought of many other ways to utilize the property, thinking it was a very valuable piece of property, and beyond what I understand was the three buildings that they're looking to save or maintain, that there's an awful lot more that could be done with it, but it was, I guess, planting trees and butterfly gardens and that kind of thing, which is fine in and of itself. There was no mention of the water or the beach, not tonight anyway, in terms of whatever is planned for that, although it is part of the property. In terms of the idea that there's no state money involved, at least to my knowledge, there is the likelihood that we could limit the use of the property to township presidents only, not to every Tom, Dick, and Harry from the county or whatever. Given that, then perhaps the use of the waterway, the beach, might be something that would be enjoyable to people who don't live in a lake community. And those are my comments. I'm just looking for more information. Thank you.
Anyone else? Frank?
I don't know.
Please state your name and area, town you live in.
My name is Frank Sharkey, and I live in Vernon Township. This is not about this. I thought that was a beautiful presentation, and I think the area up there is beautiful. But I have two questions that have nothing to do with that. Can I ask them now?
Sure.
I read in the paper and I talk with my neighbors about the mayor's race. The question that always comes up that it seems like in the paper is, is it a full-time job or a part-time job? My question is, I would like to know, do we have a job description? Because if we're going to have a part-time mayor, in the future, not even today, we don't want to be paying him, I'll throw out a number, crazy number, $100,000 if next week he decides I'm only going to do it part-time. Do we have a 40-hour or do we have a 15-hour? You know, I think that it would be nice if the people in town knew about that. My second question is, what's going to happen down at the park on the crossing? I heard that we're going to tear it down, we're going to rip it down. It's beyond repair. Well, a lot of people volunteered, and a lot, I saw paving blocks in the presentation that was just put on, there are a lot of paving blocks down there with names on it. Is there any plan for that park at this time?
I'm sure that the mayor has some comments about that tonight as well.
Sure. We'll be addressing it, Frank.
Thank you very much.
And as far as the mayor's job description, it's spelled out in the administrative code. It's, Frank, it's spelled out in the administrative code, and you can't limit somebody to the amount of hours they put in the job, because if, at the end of the day, he goes home at 4:30, and then something happens after that, what are you going to do? Say I'm not the mayor after 4:30? You're the mayor 24/7, and that's the way the administrative code spells that his job entails.
Well, suppose that the future-
Frank, you're already done talking, but that's all right. You can finish out your five minutes.
I can understand what you're saying, that the mayor's the mayor, you see it 24 hours a day, but it doesn't, you know, people that I know, because every time I read it in the paper, it says, is it part-time or is it full-time? If it's full-time, then I have no problem with it. But I mean, if you're just saying the mayor's the mayor, that doesn't really answer my question.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? And I don't know too many people that know about this, wherever it's located, where his job dis-
In the administrative code?
Yeah. I've never seen the administrative code, so-
You can look at it online anytime you like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, no problem, Frank. Anyone else?
My name is Bill McPeak. I live in Glen Harbor, which is one of the lake communities on Lake Glenwood, and our major concern obviously is what plans are there for the lake, if any. Would the town, if they do plan to utilize the water facility, would they share with us and the lake community and the cost of maintaining that lake, which we spend a good amount of money on? Number two, how is it going to be policed? We know for a fact that there are a number of people that have come down through the camp, onto the lake, et cetera, et cetera, and are trespassing. Obviously, the place is a nightmare. The biggest factor is also, as a taxpayer, what's the cost going to be? Is this open space fund going to pay for everything? Is it also going to pay for the demolition of the buildings? We were told by the Environmental Commission that they were given an estimate of between $100,000 and $150,000 just to remove the asbestos that are on, the asbestos shingles that are presently on the cabins. Is that open space fund going to be, can it be used for the destruction of the existing cabins? I mean, there's a lot of questions here, obviously, and I'm sure you folks have them too, but as a taxpayer, you know, what's the cost of all of this going to be? It's going to be an ongoing cost, obviously, as time goes on, and if you're going to utilize the lake, I mean, you're talking lifeguards, that lake is not stocked. What's to prevent people coming in there and pulling out fish leftover, hand over hand, so on and so forth? So those are my concerns, and I think I speak for our community when I say that. Can you address that? Are there any plans for the utilization of the lake? If so, what are they?
I think we'll get to answering questions when we get to the next part of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Oh, sorry. I'll get to go next. Hi, I'm Michael Hogan. I'm with the village of Lake Glenwood, across from the camp. We took a tour of the camp a couple of weeks ago, and we saw the condition of the camp, which is horrible. I mean, I think we all agree that from the road, from 565, it's an eyesore. From across the camp, it's an eyesore. Okay, there's probably activity going on in the camp right now. That's probably illegal activity with very little control over it. I like what Beverly has presented today. Yes, just like the last gentleman, I have concerns about the use of the lake, okay, no matter what the plans are for the camp, but I'm fully supportive of the Environmental Commission committing and doing something, and even though it's not going to be a revenue producer for the township, I think the added benefits for the community, okay, are tremendous. I think right now we seem to be in the ideation stage, and I'd like to see us move to something that's a little bit more executable, okay, maybe the next step in terms of pulling together a business plan. And I would support, okay, the town, the town's movement in that direction, because I think that is the next step. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Joe Serino. I am a citizen town, lived across the street from Camp Sussex about 20 years. I want to thank the Environmental Commission. That was a great presentation and a wonderful usage of the property. I've also witnessed some of the concerns that are brought up by my fellow townspeople here, and it seems to me that anything we can do will be an improvement, and that it's something that has to be done over time. It's a process, it's not something that can happen overnight, but anything that we do invest in should, I think, elevate the possibility for young people in the town, and perhaps try to turn this place into usages that are exactly opposite some of the usages that are unfortunately occurring there right now. So we have an organization in town that's presented wonderful theater for us every single year, every single summer, and I'd love to see them get access to some of the facilities and some of the properties there that are currently vacated and in very bad disrepair. And it would seem to me that the best remedy might be some sort of a committee, or a group of townspeople that might come together and try to figure out and basically gradually station improvements over time, so that it would be both fiscally possible and also so that it would maybe focus on the most urgent needs first, and then move on to other needs and other possibilities. It's been tough to see what's happened to that property over the years, and more than that, it's been tough to see what's happened at that property over the years. I've raised three children in this wonderful town, and I've seen close up what some of the damages that can be done, so I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to, that we'll be able to come together as a community and perhaps slowly but surely develop this property into all that it can be, and it's just something that really supports our young people for the future. Thanks for giving me the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Heather Burns, and I'm from the Highland Lakes section of town. Some of you may remember me, because I was here two years ago when the camp property was first brought up. I am in charge of the Highland Stage, which is the local community theater here in town, and there is a huge theater on the Camp Sussex property, and I love the Environmental Committee's vision. I think it's great, I'm all about it. I also think, though, that we have these resources that are slowly rotting, that we're not using, and there's ways to make it work if people work together. Because in my situation, I have a 501(c)(3) company that is able to fundraise and things like that, so there are ways that it wouldn't necessarily be a burden on the taxpayer, because if we had groups in there, like the arts groups that we have in town that are sorely underrepresented, and we have tons of new fields, we've got great new playgrounds, we unfortunately do have some playgrounds that need some work, and I know all of them, because my kids play on them all, so I'm a member of this town, I'm always around. But what we don't have a lot of is support for the arts. We don't have a place, if you wanted your kid to go take an art class, where would you take them? Where are we going? We're going to other towns. If you want to go see a good theater show, even if you don't want to go all the way to New York, you're not going to Vernon, you're going over to Sussex, who has a community theater, or to West Milford, who has a community theater, or to Warwick. But nothing is in Vernon, and we need to remedy that, because we have a huge town, we have huge resources here, and we have people to support those resources. So I'm hoping that in with the environmental approach, that we can look at some of those buildings that are in disrepair, and I have been to the property, and I did walk around the building that is the theater building, and it definitely is in bad shape, but it is salvageable and can be used to help the children of this town. And when I tell you, it is very obvious, if you've walked around that property, there are broken beer bottles, and there are definite signs that the kids are up to no good. Let's turn it into someplace where the kids have a place to go and do something for the good of the community. Thank you.
As enthusiastic now as she was when she was a student.
Gary Martinson, Vernon. Very nice presentation, thank you, the Environmental Commission. It's good, because it finally gives you a little bit of a picture of what the vision is, as opposed to saying, I have a nice vision. I appreciate some of the comments the others have made. Particularly, I think at this juncture, what we need is a lot more information, especially the numbers, and one of the things that you might want to do, as well as getting other groups involved, is, it sounds like the people that are present are ones that are very interested in that, but there might be others that aren't, so I think we need to perhaps find out, does the community as a whole support this? Because you're going to need that in order for this to go forward and on long-term. My own personal opinion is, I'd love to see it brought back as a day camp of some kind, that brings revenue in, and there isn't any day camps in this area. Excuse me.
You're right, I apologize.
It was going to go on, except there's one in Sparta, near the Votek, but as far as a really good camp of that quality. Now, the last time the mayor mentioned the fact that it draws water from the lake and stuff, well, you could drill the well. The buildings that have to come down, if I'm not mistaken, at the last council meeting, we were talking about perhaps with foreclosures, it would be upon the owners or the banks to tear down the negative property, or take care of the negative property. The situation with the drinking and stuff, unfortunately, I hate to say this, but kids will be kids, they'll find somewhere else. I'd like to see, I think, I studied a little bit about the trees and stuff, so I'd like to learn a little bit more about that information. I'd like to see a couple more presentations, and I definitely would like to see it out there for the community, give you some feedback, or give all of us some feedback. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm John Tremont, a Vernon resident. I'm also a resident of Glen Harbor, which is a neighbor of the lake. Bill McPeak spoke earlier. There was another representative from the village of Lake Glenwood that also spoke this evening. I think it's important, if you're going to be successful with this plan, and it sounds like there's some merits here, obviously, a lot of questions about the costs from the general taxpayer perspective, but it's very important, I think, to involve the neighbors of this lake community. Both communities have boards. I think it's important you establish, you know, some relationship with these boards early on in the process. Get us involved, get our input, because especially if you're going to look to share the rights to that lake, it's a private lake, it's very important to both communities. I think that's just very important right up front, to establish that relationship and get us involved, so I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Alex Wolutch, 8 Harborside Drive, Glenwood Lake Community. I moved into a private lake community with private lake access. I support the vision, it's a nice vision, but I strongly want no public access to the lake. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Risa Van de Linda. I don't live in the lake communities, but my house is the first house next to Camp Sussex. So I'm very concerned with what we're going to do with the property. There is, the caretaker's home, I believe, is right next to me, and I've watched it disintegrate pretty much. People dump things there. I guess my concern is just, I don't want, if anything gets built there, to be built on my property, pretty much. You know what I mean? It's like right next to me. So I just, I don't know, just want to make sure that even though I'm not in a lake community, I am still concerned with it. That's all.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing that there are no other members of the public wish to speak, can I have a motion to close public comments?
No move.
Motion made by council member Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Murphy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Mayor?
What I've passed to the council, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, is a package of information that was prepared as a result of the first meeting that, where our environmental commission actually came to the town council and made their presentation. We were asked several things. One, of course, is cost, and we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight. While I won't get specific, I will give you a little bit, so you know that we are not even thinking about depleting the open space fund. That fund still has a balance just a little bit under a million dollars at the present time. Acquisition price is about half of that. Why am I not getting specific? Because there has not been a hard and fast negotiation with the owners of the property. But I'd like to give you, if I may, a little background. Included in the package that I just handed to the council is the open space program in Vernon Township, which actually was adopted in 2010. It has its roots in the early 2000s. And this particular piece of property was identified, as a matter of fact, by the state, by the township, by the New Jersey Land Conservancy, as a prime piece of property that should be, in fact, preserved and owned by the township. The report I have in my hand is available. It's available actually either by, on our website or anybody who wants one, I'll be more than happy to provide one to you. But this open space program in Vernon Township, and I just want to quote to you, page 44, "Outside the Highlands Preservation Area is the, is the site of Camp Sussex, a nonprofit camp that is currently inactive. The land abuts Glenwood Lake and includes an outflow stream that is ranked trout maintenance. Our objective is to explore the creation of a Glenwood Lake community park on the site of Camp Sussex that would provide public access to the lakefront beach." This was in 2010. Additional open space for recreation, active and otherwise, a community center through our existing onsite facility. Now, I can hear and I listen very closely. There obviously is a concern about what are we going to do with the lake. And I have to be very candid with you and tell you that while I may have a personal opinion about it, that decision is going to have to be made either by committee or by this council. Some feel that it should be open to the public. Some feel that it shouldn't be open to the public. I think that's part of the process. And one of the things that I'd like to really get clear this evening, if I may, is the history of this. You all recall that two years ago, in 2012, I broached the subject of acquiring this camp at the time that the people who owned the tax certificates still had them. And I had spoken with them and they were willing to sell them back to the township. At that point in time, the cost of acquisition to get those tax certificates back would have been $420,000 roughly, give or take. I was directed that time by the council to, in fact, enter into due diligence, to do research, to find out what it would cost for demolition if, in fact, we decided to acquire the park, to find out, in fact, why it was that it had never been returned to a camp. I'd like to speak to some of those issues. There's a gentleman here with us this evening who is a real estate agent who has shown this camp to a minimum of at least 15 organizations that I know of in an attempt to convince them to reopen this camp as a camp. The cost of doing that under today's regulations, in terms of water, in terms of sewage, in terms of housing, in terms of all the things that come to bear, would put the cost after acquisition somewhere around $5 million. Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong about this, Dwayne. About $5 million or more, to put it back as an operating day camp. And unfortunately, in today's world, even the groups who are interested in having day camps don't have the kind of resources to be able to do that. And so the sale of that property to that, for that kind of purpose, has been, at least in the entire three years that I've been the mayor, that I'm aware of, has been thoroughly explored. And frankly, at this point in time, the people who own the property, because they went through and foreclosed and wiped out all of the liens that were against it. Not only were there property tax liens against this property from Vernon Township, but there were federal liens, there were also business liens, there were a myriad of those things that dissuaded me as your mayor from getting us involved in that kind of activity. Because really, when you do that, you have no real way of knowing where it's going to end dollars and cents wise. And so I thought it was prudent in conversations with the, with councilmen, one-on-one, for us to back away from it and to allow the process to go forward. And that process now has been completed. This property is owned free and clear of all liens by a company called TMF Funds. They buy a lot of our tax certificates. They're in the business of buying tax certificates and they make money by doing that. Because if the taxes are above $1,500 a year, the interest rate that the individual has to pay back is 18 percent. Where can you make that kind of money today? Unfortunately, and that's state law. That's not set by us. Okay? That's the state law. In this particular case, they now own the property and they do have some people who are interested in purchasing it. I, at this point, don't know what they plan to do with it, although I have my doubts as to what they can do with it. But I have had conversations with them. And I can tell you that the acquisition price is, as I said, roughly half of what the, what the open space fund is. So as to do, what to do with the lake, that's something yet to be decided. And I think, as we have done in the past and we will continue to do, we'll involve the, the community and get your input. I personally, and this is just one man, and I don't even get a vote on this, I'd rather give you the lake bottom back. I don't want the headache. I'll tell you straight out, I don't want the headache. The gentleman who spoke about it in terms of the keeping the water clean and all the rest of it, I do understand that. Yet I do know there are folks who are saying, oh, no, 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 if you do that, then, you know, I won't support it because I want access to the lake. That is yet to be decided. I believe seriously that what we need to do is to address the questions that were asked, and one of them was, what about the dam? And so the dam that's at the end on the lake. I engaged at the direction of the council at the last meeting, I engaged Mr. Corey Stoner, our town engineer, to inspect the dam and to give us a report. I was actually surprised to find out that it's not really a dam. It's only two feet high. And the DEP doesn't even consider it to be a dam. But nonetheless, we had Mr. Stoner do some testing and take some pictures and do some inspection. There are probably some improvements that would need to be made to the spillway, but that embankment is solid and safe. And at this point in time, even the DEP in their report refers to it as, "New Jersey DEP did keep the structure in their filing system, but they labeled the structure to have a hazard classification of zero." Lastly, question of, does the open space fund that has been sitting now for eight years, seven years since the last purchase, do, does the township have, township have the right to use that fund, those funds to buy the, the property? There is a legal opinion that was provided by our municipal attorney, Mr. Kelly, at our, our request, and he did a complete review. That report will be made available, but in essence, it very much qualifies. There's no question about it. So acquisition cost, in terms of a further burden on the taxpayers, it will not be. And as far as wiping out the open space fund completely, that will not happen either. Thirdly, I can tell you that I have been in conversation with the state of New Jersey and the Green Acres people. They love this project and they're, they would just love us to make an application in which they would contribute about $150,000 to $160,000 toward the purchase. But as someone else already spoke, I believe it was Craig, if we do that, then we open our park up to anybody who wants to come there. So that decision has to be made yet, but it doesn't have to prevent us from moving forward in terms of acquiring the property, as I see it. We acquire the property, we secure it. How do we do that? Those who have seen the town council meetings and who have heard me speak, no. And I'm extremely concerned about the vandalism that's occurring to township property all over the place. I was really upset about some damage that was done at Maple Grange. It's happened down at, at the flats. And I can tell you that in the 19, excuse me, 2014 budget, we are beginning to place remote solar powered cameras on all of our property. And I can assure you that those properties will be monitored in the dispatch of the police department. Now, you know, I know, again, people are going to be like, oh, man, Big Brother's watching. Well, it's a shame that we have to go to that. But when I look at the amount of money that's invested in our, in our public property and the, the very small number of people who decide that it's their right to destroy it and to deface it, I believe that it's important for us to, in fact, take action. And so procure it, secure it, begin to address the grant that we have from the forestry department. I mean, when I think about it, where are we going to plant 1,200 trees, folks? We gotta, we gotta plant them on property owned by the township. We can't plant them on state land. We can plant them on the county property if we get permission from them. We did some of that with the first grant. And then take the time to, in fact, plan with a committee and the help of professional people exactly how this should go and over what period of time. All of you know that this government has, has strived to reduce the burden of your property tax on your property while delivering services, looking at ways to do that, thinking outside the box and the like. That's not going to stop. And that's not going to stop on this particular project. And I guess in closing, not I guess, what I want to say in closing to you is, I get the police reports every single day. I don't mean to sound dramatic, but I can tell you right now what's going on on that property is not just a nuisance, it's downright dangerous. Those of you who came out on the Saturday morning, and I'm sure you recognize, our environmental commission invited you people because they want your input. They want you to be involved. They want the community to support this project because it's a good project. And because it will take care of a potential social problem that we have not been able to address for all this time. It isn't like we didn't know what was going on at Camp Sussex, folks. All of you people that live there, you hear the noise, you hear the stories, you see the result of it. Is this going to make it go away totally? No. The gentleman who said it'll move, they'll move, we know that. But why should we make it easy for people to misbehave? And with it being owned by the township, secured by the township, maintained by the township, and offering programs to the younger people, the young people, as well as our seniors? If you looked at the pictures that, that the environmental commission put up there, their concept, their, their vision, as I understand it, is something that will serve all of us and at the same time, remove that black eye that once was a beautiful gem. So I would just say to you, I am going to ask the council to direct me to actually enter into hard negotiations with the owners of this property so that I can come back in the very near future and indicate, this is the price. I can tell you this, okay? They want us to have it as badly as we want it. That's a fact. That's a fact. I have found them in my conversations to be cooperative. I can tell you that they are a resource for this community that most of you don't ever even see because they're the companies that buy the tax certificates on unpaid taxes property. And that's how we can afford to continue to run our government and pay the school in the county, have to pay them when people don't pay their taxes. So I would just simply say to you that I intend to ask the council tonight for a directive by action. And I, for one, as your mayor, liked what I heard. I like the idea of, of the community to be involved. I like the idea of what the, the environmental commission did. That was their initiative to invite you folks there. You'll notice that your mayor wasn't there and most of the council wasn't there. Isn't that, we didn't care? This project was initiated. Two years ago, it was my idea and frankly, I backed away from it. This project was initiated by your envi- environmental commission when they recognized that the new owners were ready to move, they were ready to sell. And I think they've done a great job and I think they'll continue to do a great job if you give us the chance to do it. So I thank you for your patience. I thank you for listening. Council members, I apologize for turning my back to you, but I hope you heard what I had to say. That concludes my report.
I do have some questions, if you don't mind answering.
No, no, I don't mind at all.
You had said that there are no liens on the property, so that's, that's a good thing to hear.
Yes.
What would be the cost of the demolition?
We have several estimates at this point in time. Again, none hard and fast because not owning the property, not having a firm commitment, all that we could do was to pick up the phone, call the demolition companies and say, look, do a walkthrough, give us an idea of what it would be like. We couldn't even tell them exactly what buildings we were going to knock down. So arbitrarily, I said to them, well, look, you know, I think we should save the gym, you know, we think we should save the theater, those are important. I have a personal affection for the post office because it's a mini museum of history. There's so much history in that post office, it's unbelievable. The gazebo, there are some who are talking about wanting to turn the, the dining area into a community center. So let me come back and tell you. They range from $150,000 to $500,000 in demolition. Again, once we have a firm deal, then we can begin to talk about, okay, what are we going to keep? What are we going to get rid of? And then, obviously, we can give hard numbers. Again, it's not like it has to be done tomorrow. If we secure the property and secure the property, okay, then we can do it at the rate that we can afford.
We don't, we could purchase the property and then secure it. We don't have to worry about, you know, our police going on the property with warrants or anything. They could just go on it anytime they please.
That's absolutely right. That's absolutely right. The other part of it is, the only time really, I mean, they, they try to patrol it, okay? But, I mean, we've dealt, I know the council and I have dealt with this issue, grappled with it. You know, for a community 70 square miles, all we have and 24,000 people, 28 police officers doesn't get it. So, you know, having a patrol there, that really has an impact. So it happens. They have to be reactive rather than proactive. Again, if it's township property, and you'll notice, by the way, that Maple Grange and Veterans Field don't have that kind of problem. Because not only are the police involved, but so is the community. They're there, using the facility. When they see somebody vandalizing or misbehaving or whatever, I, I saw it, as a matter of fact, on Vernon Day, you know?
Walking out.
Exactly. And somebody walked over to the young man and said, hey, that's not acceptable. So.
Does any other council members have any questions? What do you, okay. How much more manpower or how much manpower do you anticipate this project will need?
Initially, I don't anticipate-
In what areas would the manpower be?
It's a good question, Dick. Initially, I don't anticipate the manpower to be overwhelming. However, the maintenance aspect of it would actually demand additional people in the DPW, but frankly, we're making provisions to add to the DPW anyway. DPW, but frankly, we're making provisions to add to the DPW anyway. You, I know, are well aware that as part of our shared service with the Vernon MUA, our DPW, two of our DPW people actually take care of the sewer system, and we are reimbursed their salaries by the Vernon MUA. Mr. Pulis, the head of DPW, is already looking to add two more people because between the road projects that we have on the books for this year and the maintenance of our fields, and I think everyone would agree that our people do a great job in maintaining the fields, we would want to continue that kind of work. So the answer to your question is, I can't give you a definitive answer right now. It would be predicated upon how quickly we decide to move, what we decide to do, but it definitely is going to take more people, just simply to keep the lawns mowed and the trees planted and watered and that sort of thing. We're thinking, too, at the present time, we're presently handling Maple Grange and Veterans Memorial Park, basically with two individuals, and two young men that come on in the summer.
That was my question, thank you very much.
That's it?
Anybody else?
I have lots of questions, but one of the problems here is that I think we're still way too early to make any decision. I asked for a plan. I see some materials here, but there are a lot of issues, I think, that have to be formulated before we even get to the answers. For instance, we'd have to perform a Phase 1 investigation, and then there have to be, if there's pollutants, as we suspect there might be, we'd have to do a Phase 2. Those are things that have to be paid for. What will be the cost to maintain the park? We should have a proposal that estimates what the exact cost would be once the park is designed and planned. Can the property be subdivided? I thought that Heather's suggestion was a good one. It seems to me that it might be advantageous to set up an umbrella corporation, which would be made up of many other not-for-profits. It seems to me that's a great idea, and takes some of the burden off the municipality and the residents, and it provides a use, if that theater can be used, if art classes could be taught, if concerts could be given, and perhaps there's some revenue. But this is why I asked for a plan at the last meeting in which this is brought up. How much would it cost to just maintain the theater? These are all issues, I think, that have to be decided on and at least estimated before we move forward. Is there going to be a traffic study? A gentleman mentioned lifeguards, if you're going to use the water. Will we need park attendants? Will there be a caretaker? Will we have a salary and provided housing? Who's going to pay for the surveys? Will we need a forestry management program? Basically, when you have trees, the state requires a forestry management expert. There is a problem with farmers in this town, that pasture land and hayland is becoming a great minimum, and part of that property is already hayed. Are you going to preserve that ability for farmers to make hay for their animals? To me, that's a very important issue. Can farmers pasture part of the property? These are all issues, I think, that would come forward in a responsible plan, and I don't think we're there yet. Will we have to build roads to accept emergency vehicles? Because they're tall trees, will we have to get a ladder truck in there? These are all, is there going to be a lakeside draft site produced? And if so, who's going to pay for it? Will the site be electrified? Will we need a light impact study if it's going to be electrified and we're going to have park lights?
So in the year 2019, we'll be able to get into that park?
But with a plan, we can get to 2019.
The ladder trucks don't get used to put out tree fires, do they?
Will we need to set up a park authority? These are all issues, I think, that should have come forward in a plan before we even discuss acquiring the property. Essentially, that's, I think, a job that we have to do. And if the residents can get involved in that, then all well and good, I think it'd be a great project.
Any other council members have any comments?
I do. I, maybe I should have asked the first question, because I'm still trying to locate where they actually filed the deed. If they foreclosed and they took possession of this property, I still show the owners as Camp Sussex, not...
Because the county clerk hasn't filed it yet, and they're way behind. They own it.
Well, I don't, I actually visited the Hall of Records and the county clerk about two weeks ago, and also online, the judgments, there are still judgments open. And I know that some of the lien holders that I did speak to, they said that they had received letters, but these judgments are still open on New Jersey courts.
Foreclosed at a sheriff's sale, Mrs. Murphy?
I understand, but it's not recorded. It's not recorded, so if it's not recorded, who owns it? I mean, just because they did foreclose, I'd still like to see it recorded. If they own the property and there are environmental issues, maybe they should be paying for the cleanup. We know there's an underground oil tank. We're only talking about the lakeside of the property, correct?
Yes.
Because I do know, actually, above environmental, they did actually do some type of a cleanup on the other side, which they were part of this, they never got paid, but that never did get resolved, but...
By the present owners or the former owners?
Who's the owners? There's my question.
TMF, I've told you.
Well, and like I said, I have, I don't have a document showing me that they actually own it. I know they paid the tax liens, but, so they may have control of it because they paid the tax liens, but I don't show where they own it. And I went to, when I went to the Hall of Records, they told me that those, as soon as they're filed and they get them, they're filed instantly.
They went through a sheriff's sale, sheriff's sale wiped out all of the liens.
I'll go to the county clerk's office tomorrow again, and I'll go look for it.
Go for it.
But the point is, I still don't show on record who owns it. And the whole point is, if there are environmental issues, as Dan said, a Phase 1 environmental study needs to be done in order to figure out what's there. We can't, we can't possibly buy property when we have no idea what the costs are. Somebody should be able to go in there and do a study and tell us what the costs are. To just come between $150,000 and $500,000, that's an awful lot of money.
You should pay for that.
For the environmental study, the town should, just like an inspection. If you're going into some type of a cost, and the environmental, the Phase 1 is somewhere around the cost of $10,000.
Okay.
By an impartial company, but that's certainly a far cry from putting your neck out and taking the responsibility for a piece of property you have no idea what's going on there. And for the demolition of all these buildings, there is asbestos, there is lead paint. I hear that Duane Paul couldn't sell it. I hear the current owners want to sell it, have buyers. There's a lot of money owed. They made a bad investment, I said it a year and a half ago, I said it a month ago. It's not up to us to bail them out. We have open space money. That doesn't mean they deserve to get the money that they paid in our tax dollars back. Not our problem. But the point is, if we're going into this, it would be a great park, it would be a great area to have, and what's the other assurances if the town takes over this property, that it stays a park? Two years from now, you could own the property, and all of a sudden, things change with the Highlands, and now the town decides to develop and do something else with it? Well, what are the assurances?
I can build a easement and a restriction.
The restrictions on, if it's purchased with open space preservation and trust funds, it's in my memo, but the restrictions would not allow you to develop it at all.
No, but that would have to be...
Right, and any Green Acres money would do the same thing.
But still and all, who owns it? I'm still going back to who owns it. If there's environmental issues there, if TMR, TMF, whoever they are, if they own it, and we do a study and we find out that there's an oil leak, all you do is you get a company in, they come in, they test. We could remove the oil tank. It certainly, I mean, taking an oil tank out and finding out that there's a spill there is a big difference. So, that's where I stand. Would be a great park, but we need to have costs, and quite frankly, I don't see, you know, emptying half of the open space fund just to give them their money back. It's almost like an end run, getting the tax dollars from them and then giving it back to them from our open space fund. We have a, what is it, the bike path, that all this property was purchased and was never completed. We're not getting tax dollars on that either.
I think that, in good part, we're asking businesses and people to move into Vernon Township, and we're going to be deciding on whether to spend money on ourselves at this point. And when you're building a house, and you have the money to build the house, you start in a basement, you work your way up the side walls, and you get to the roof, and then all of a sudden, you run out of money. And all of a sudden, somebody says, "I can give you money to finish that house, but you can only put a roof on it with that money, you can't do anything else." Well, that's where we're at right now. And if there are environmental issues with this property, and these people don't sell it, we will never know that they are in there because there's nobody going to take a test for it.
That's what I said, do the test.
Okay, actually, can I finish what I'm saying? We're going to find out in quick order when the property is sold, if there is any problems. Now, I, you know, we're asking businesses to move into this township, too. We've got to be able to have the guts to spend the money on ourselves. It's coming out of a fund that was earmarked for this type of project, and in January of 2014, the mayor at the time signed the amendment to the open space program of Vernon Township, specifically citing Camp Sussex as one of those properties, along with the bike path. Well, we're at the decision point. Do we want to purchase this property or not? And I'd like to make a motion that we give the mayor a directive to enter into negotiations with the interested parties for the purchase of Camp Sussex.
I'd like to second that motion, Council President. The understanding that this is not something new for the mayor to do. Negotiating contracts is something that he has done quite frequently. Certainly, a project of this size requires a great deal of due diligence. Coming up with the purchase price is only one part of it. Questions that Councilwoman Murphy have asked are very valid questions. Certainly, the concerns that Council Katush brought to the floor are valid questions. But to think that these questions are not going to be addressed, I find somewhat disconcerting. Perhaps they might not be addressed to the extent that people might not like, but I think there's a degree of certitude that the mayor's background brings to the floor on something like this, that when he brings this information back, I believe we'll be able to act in a deliberate, in a knowledgeable manner, so would that second?
Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I'm not finished with the discussion.
You can speak when you go to vote, too, Dan, no problem.
I can't vote unless I've had a full discussion on it.
Okay. We have a...
I'd like to ask everyone in the audience, how many of you bought a house without an inspection?
Can't take that.
Nobody?
Who's suggesting we buy it without an inspection?
Now, Phase 1 has to be done before you know what you're doing.
Who's suggesting we buy it without an inspection? Your comment implies that we don't know how to go about making a purchase, which is not the case. I asked for the authority to do serious negotiation on the price. If you think for one second that we will enter into any kind of a contract, Mrs. Murphy's point is right, spot on. You think we don't recognize it? I recognize it. As far as your plan goes, tell me what you want there, I'll tell you what the plan's going to cost.
I told you, I gave you all the questions.
Yeah, you asked the questions, but you don't answer them. The point of the matter is...
That's your job.
No, 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 it's a two-way street, Mr. Katush. It's a two-way street. The point I'm making to you is, no one's going to buy this land without due diligence, no one. But we can't get to due diligence without having the authority to negotiate.
And how can you negotiate a price if you don't know what you're buying? Let me ask you.
All right, all right, I'm asking the audience, this is not going to work with shouts and clapping, just let the council speak, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Maybe, maybe the owners would consider a gift to the township. Then we have a different scenario, don't we? Because then the environmental commission has full rights to own that property as a commission. That's the way the commission was set up, for gifts, donations. I'm opposed to just trying to establish a commercial price, an appraisal for it, without knowing all these questions, without knowing what the plan is going to be for this particular property. How is the township going to accept the responsibility, and what responsibility are they going to accept? They going to accept the responsibility for maintaining a theater? Do we have now a theater department in town? I'd like to see a plan. I want to see what the structure is going to be before we move on it.
And I'd like to see the document showing who owns it.
In all due respect, Mr. Katush, they're the same arguments that were used not to create Maple Grange Park. And look at Maple Grange today. There's no doubt that planning needs to be done. There's no doubt that due diligence needs to be done.
We had a fair plan for Maple Grange Park, and when Jim and I left office, we made sure that there was $900,000 in the budget to purchase it.
Any other comments?
It's too soon to go into negotiating.
I don't know how you can make a decision unless you know what the purchase price and what the other considerations are, and that's part of the due diligence along with the purchase price negotiations that you bring to the table.
You get permission to do the Phase 1. You get, you find out who owns it, see the document, get permission to do the Phase 1 study, then you proceed. You're negotiating an unknown with money, just because there's money in, just because there's money in the open space fund, doesn't mean we have to give it away.
Nobody's giving it away, Mrs. Murphy.
It's giving it away.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Katush?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
No.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
I have the utmost confidence in our mayor, and I've listened to this bric-ity-brac over trivia. I'm sure with the mayor's background and other individuals that will be involved, all of these issues will be addressed. I vote yes.
Councilmember, Council President Lynch?
Mayor, I, I hope that you bring us back all the answers that we need. Yes, I vote yes.
I'll do the best job I can. Mr. President, before you go on, if I...
Oh, I do have a question for you, by the way.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you please refresh us what's going on with Veterans Park?
You want to talk about Veterans Park?
Yes.
I'd be happy to. First of all, these, and I assume you're referring to the issue of the playground?
Yes.
All right. We were informed by our insurance company that the playground no longer meets safety standards, and so we had to do something about it. The people who were involved in creating that, before everybody walks away, I want to answer that question, but I also want to say this. As your mayor, I appreciate you being here tonight. I recognize that this is an important issue, and I know that you're concerned. We're not going to do anything crazy, we're not going to do anything incorrectly. We will do it in the best possible business way, and the information will be made public. That's my commitment to you on the record. Let me, let me come back and address the playground. There's no doubt in our mind that we need a playground at Veterans Memorial Park, okay? It just can't be that one. We have to take it down, and we have to build one that meets safety regulations so we can get it insured. There will be a playground there, and maybe a short timeframe where we're without one, but it won't be very, very long. The people who, I was contacted by several of the people who were involved in creating that, and they were interested in one... that, and they were interested in when we, when we take it apart, take it apart in a way that doesn't destroy it, because they'd like to move it to private property or what, I'm not really sure exactly what they have in mind. But I made a commitment that that would happen. We're not just gonna go in there with a bulldozer and rip it apart. We will take it down, we'll take the nuts and bolts out, we'll stack it, we'll make it available to the people who are interested in it, and hopefully it can get used somewhere else. But I can tell you the, that it wasn't an easy decision to make. It wasn't, because I know how much heartache and hard work and, and donation of time and money and effort went into that playground. But when you've been told by the insurance company, if there's a problem here and a youngster gets hurt, and you ignore what we're telling you, you're on your own. And I took an oath to protect this township, and I do it to the best of my ability. Hope that answered your question about the playground. Anything else?
Okay. Okay, at this point, at the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes, can I have a motion approved in the May 12, 2014 minutes? Move. Motion made by Councilmember Kayish, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt, move.
For our consent agenda this evening, we'll start off with Resolution 1483. Resolution 1483 authorizing the fireworks to be, to be displayed on July 5, 2014, within the township of Vernon pursuant to NJSA 20:3-1. The municipality must authorize the display of fireworks within the township. This resolution authorizes the Highland Lakes and Vernon Fire Departments to engage in a contract with Garden State Fireworks for public fireworks display on July 5, 2014. Resolution 1484 authorizing placement of a banner across Brickneck Road and exceeding allowable size. Each year, Christ Community Church in Highland Lakes holds a vacation Bible school. This resolution's approve, approves this year, as in prior years, for Christ Community Church to hang a banner across Brickneck Road displaying the dates of this year's vacation Bible school. Resolution 1485, this is an emergency resolution, NJSA 40A:4-48. The township has been lucky enough to receive a grant for recreation opportunity for individuals with disability, R, or, R O I D grant. This grant in the amount of $10,000 requires a match by the township of $2,000. Since the budget has already been struck, it is necessary for the township to create an emergency appropriation for the cost of the $2,000, that is, the township share. This resolution authorizes disappropriation. The funds from this grant will be used to provide recreational therapeutic horseback riding to persons with disabilities. Resolution 1486, Chapter 159, Resolution Fiscal Year 2013, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Recreation Opportunities for Individuals with Disabilities Grant. In, in the, in connection with the resolutions above, the township received the R O I D grant and must insert into the budget a line item for the special item of revenue. This revenue, I'm sorry, this resolution authorizes the insertion of this special item of revenue, the R O I D grant, into the budget. This resolution, along with the previous resolution, can be adopted at the same time. A renewal of a liquor license, this is Resolution 1487, a renewal of the liquor licenses in Vernon Township for 2014, 2015 licensing term. Each year, all liquor licenses in the state of New Jersey expire on June 30. In addition to other requirements, holders of liquor licenses must make an application to the municipality for their license's renewal. The municipality then approves their renewal via a resolution in accordance with NJSA At seek, this resolution renews liquor licenses for those applicants who at this time have met the state's requirements for renewal. Resolution 1488, resolution appointing registrar of vital statistics. Pursuant to Section 5-45 of the municipal code, in accordance with NJSA 26:8-11 and 268-13, the municipal clerk shall serve as registrar of vital statistics. This resolution authorizes the clerk to be the registrar of vital statistics in Vernon Township. Resolution 1489, authorizing the relocation of the mid-block crosswalk along Sand Hill Road by Mountain Creek Resort. In April, representatives from Mountain Creek attended a land use board meeting to discuss additions to the water park. During that meeting, several questions were presented regarding parking for the facility. The land use board approved Mountain Creek's plans conditioned upon reviewing parking and traffic management plan. This resolution authorized the relocation of a crosswalk on Sand Hill Road to ensure pedestrian safety. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve these separately.
Could I be heard on one?
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate if we could remove Resolution 14-88 to a later date, pending my review of, of an issue.
Can I have a motion to remove Resolution 1488 till, okay, then if I am, if I have the authority, I will remove it from the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a, a motion on 1483?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Kayish, second by Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
I abstain, because I'm on the fire department. Resolution 1484, have a motion?
Move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Murphy, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
1485, can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Motion made by Rizzuto, second?
Second.
Second by Kayish. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution 1486, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wetzel, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kayish. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution 1487.
Some move.
Motion made by Kayish, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto, can we, please call the roll?
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution 1489, can I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kayish, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
One of the primary reasons I wanted to separate is for 88, so I don't know the reason.
Thanks for telling us now, Dan.
Okay, introduction for the first reading of proposed ordinances?
I don't know.
Ordinance 1409.
Huh? Why was it removed?
An ordinance amending Chapter 330 land development ordinance to repeal ordinance 13-10, which established Article, uh, okay?
19.
19, there you go. Highlands preservation area requirements and replace it with Article 19 Highlands Preservation Area Land Use Ordinance to regulate the development in the Highlands Preservation Area of the Township of Vernon. The township held a workshop meeting, okay, on, on May 5 to discuss the township's adopting this Highlands Preservation Area Ordinance to bring the township in line with the Highlands Regional Master Plan. This ordinance will permit property owners who are developing in the Highlands area to come to the township for approval instead of the New Jersey DEP or the Highlands Council. This ordinance also implements the rules of the Highlands Act. May I have a motion to introduce this ordinance 1409 with a public hearing to be held on July 14, 2014?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Murphy, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce the ordinance 1409 with a public hearing on July 14, 2014.
Okay, ordinance, uh, 14-10, an ordinance amending Chapter 330 land development ordinance, Article 11, zoning section 330, 158, zoning map to, add two pages to existing zoning map depicting the Highlands Preservation Area Overlay Zone and Resource Areas governed by Chapter 330. Article 19, the Highlands Preservation Area Land Use Ordinance. At the May 5 meeting, the council also discussed updating the zoning map in accordance with the new Highlands ordinance. This ordinance adopts the updated zoning map in the accord, in accordance with the new zoning regulations. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1410? And the public hearing will be held on July 14. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, can I have a second? I'm sorry, Councilmember Wetzel made the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce ordinance 1410 with a public hearing to be held on July 14.
Thank you. Ordinance 14-11, an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation of $200,000 for the preparation of tax maps by the Township of Vernon in the County of Sussex, New Jersey. Last year, Vernon began the process of digitizing out of tax maps. The state of New Jersey has deemed creation of the tax map as a special emergency and allows five years to pay for the expense through the budget. This ordinance appropriates $200,000 for the creation of the digitized maps. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1411? With a public hearing to be held on June 23, 2014.
23.
Can I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Motion by Councilmember Rizzuto, can I have a second? Can I have a second, please?
Doesn't anybody want to?
I will second that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce the ordinance with a public hearing on June 23.
Ordinance 1412, bond ordinance appropriating $2,350,000 and authorizing issuance of 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,066,000 bonds or notes of the township for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the Township of Vernon in the County of Sussex, New Jersey. At the May 29, 2014 Township Council meeting, the council discussed various projects and items that will require funding for the upcoming year. This ordinance allows for the appropriation and financing of $2,066,000 for the purchase and expenditure of these various projects and items. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance 14-12 with the public hearing to be held on June 23, 2014?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Murphy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kayish.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Before I vote on this, I have to ask our council, normally, I recuse myself and abstain from voting with issues pertaining to the fire department. Since this isn't a direct purchase of anything for the fire department, and a very minor part of this pertains to the fire department, am I precluded from voting for this?
No. In my opinion, you do not have either a financial or-
Seven, an ordinance of the Township of Vernon, the County of Sussex, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of various equipment and repairs in, by, and for the township pursuant to NJSA 40:56-1, and appropriating therefore the sum of $240,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the Capital Improvement Fund of the township. This ordinance provides for an appropriation of $240,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund for equipment purchases and various repairs. These funds have already been appropriated for as part of the Capital Improvement Fund account in the 2013 operating budget. This ordinance does not expend the funds, but merely makes the appropriation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public comments for ordinance 1407?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Murphy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kayish, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Would anyone like to come forward? Seeing no members of the public wishing to come forward, may I have a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 1407?
Some move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1407?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Kayish, and second by Councilmember Rizzuto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance 1407.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna turn to Mayor Morata. He has two appointments to make at this point, I'm sorry, he has four appointments to make at this point.
Would you like to take them individually, or-
Yes, I would like to have them individually.
The first appointment that I would like to put before the council for their approval is to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, Mr. Dan Siegel, known to, I'm sure, all or most, if not all of you, owner of Healthy Times, very active in developing businesses, or business and economic plans for independent retailers. He's one of, one of the co-founders of the Vernon Independent Retailer Association. He's worked very hard to, in fact, make Healthy Times one of the top businesses in the Shop Vernon program in its first month, and I am pleased and proud to nominate Dan as a member of our Economic Development Advisory Committee and hope you will support him.
Some move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kayish, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kayish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Absolutely, yes.
Dan, please stand up.
Thank you for serving, Dan. My next appointment is the Vernon Municipal Utilities Authority, and I'd like to place the nomination as a second alternate in Mrs. Phyllis Pfeifer. Phyllis, again, is known to us, she's been an active member of our community. She has served this community as a private citizen. Her background actually is administration in the educational field. She had tremendous responsibility in the New York City school system in her workdays and will bring the things that she learned there to bear on the decisions that we need to, the MUA needs to make. So I appreciate your consideration and support.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the nomination of Phyllis Pfeifer.
Second. I would like to question this procedure. Phyllis, it has nothing to do with your qualifications, but I question our ordinance in the sense that I'd like to have the attorney explain 528, Section 4.
Okay, you've given me a section of the Code entitled Chapter 528, Municipal Utilities Authority, Section 4, Appointment of Members. Is there any particular, can I have a little more?
Yes, I contend that this is a council appointment, not the mayor's appointment, and I have a statement to make after someone wishes to appoint Phyllis.
I just made the motion to appoint Phyllis Pfeifer to the Vernon Township MUA as a second alternate number two.
I want to make it clear. Yes.
It's the procedure.
Yes, yep. Well, Dan, we are in the middle of a motion. I am not counsel for the MUA.
No, but you're counsel for the council.
That's true. That I do know, but--
And that is our book. That's not the MUA book.
That I also know. The timing, I will say, was not very good to bring this up now.
Would you like me to read it to the public?
No, I can read it, Jane, I can read it, but really, really--
I wasn't being fresh, I was just asking if you wanted me to read it.
I mean, is this what you want me to read? Said, "Members and alternate members shall be appointed by resolution of the council of the Township of Vernon in the matter provided by law." That's what you wanted me to read.
And basically, in a Faulkner Act, mayor council form of government, it's not the mayor that chooses, it's for authority, it's the council.
How have these appointments been made so far?
Well, up to now, I believe the mayor's made the appointments.
And I believe you helped write the administrative code.
And that's what the code says, but we haven't followed the code. And so I raised the issue as a procedure, and I believe that--
Why wasn't this brought up at the other 12 times we voted for the MUA?
I just discovered it.
Okay.
Well, just like a lot of other things have been discovered in this book.
And I noted also that the township website is incorrect. Says five commissioners and up to two alternates, all of whom are appointed by the mayor.
I see where this is coming from.
No, basically, we have to include in Section B that under the general powers and duties of the council, clearly establishes the council's authority to appoint members to the municipal authority, the township's municipal authority.
Yes.
It's clear.
Mr. Kelly, are there any other statutes that apply that you know of?
There are many other statutes--
And wouldn't it be much better for us to have a review of it and be able to have an informed opinion rather than a blind side at an appointment?
Well, out of respect to Ms. Pfeifer, I didn't want to try to hold this up, but I think that's the only reasonable thing to do.
There's nothing to hold up. This is also the state statute.
I don't know what this is that you're handing me, but if you want, and I will look at it, but in the middle of a vote on a nominee is not, it just--
It's very clear. Make it as a council appointment, and Ms. Pfeifer has put on the--
It's a council appointment. Once we vote on it, it's a council appointment. I move the question.
I made the motion to adopt Phyllis Pfeifer as alternate number two. The second was made by Councilmember Rizzuto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kadeesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to the appointment of a special police officer class number two.
Actually, I think we could do these together since it's the same position, if you don't mind.
Can I please have water at this meeting?
I'm sorry. Special police officer class two appointments nominating Roy Weary and Thomas Zabriski. They are, the class two special police officer is differentiated from special police officer class one in the fact that they are trained and legally able to carry firearms. They also are able to, in fact, enforce the laws as an active patrolman would do, and so we will be adding to our ability to man different functions with people who are, in fact, academy-trained and experienced, so I would appreciate your adoption of their appointments.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
To adopt, to appoint Roy Weary and Tom Zabriski as a special police officer class two. Motion made by Councilmember Murphy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kadeesh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kadeesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to--
Councilmember Murphy, you have any comments?
Um, let's see. Is there an issue going on with the radios that the, I remember you had mentioned that there was a problem with some of the specs with the radios for the, at the fire departments?
Yes, there is.
And is it true that FEMA is looking for a refund from the township?
At this point in time, I'll answer no more questions because we are dealing with an issue that may very well end up with litigation as well as contracts. If you'd like to discuss, I'll be more than happy to answer your questions in executive session.
And a question, this is just a general question, as Resolution, I think it was And that's for the maps, the special emergen, oh no, I'm sorry, it was not that. The ordinance 1411, special emergency appropriation, and this is just a question from my own knowledge, that since it's being specified as a special emergency appropriation, why is it called an emergency appropriation if it's something that we knew about? Is that just how it's done? I mean, I know it's allowed for tax maps because I did look up the statute, but I'm just, if it's something we've known about, why wasn't it, why is that something that doesn't go into the budget? Why is it done that way?
If you knew about it going into the budget at $200,000, you'd have to spend that all in one year?
Right.
Where the state allows you because it's such a huge expense and it's not technically capital, that you can spend it over five years.
Okay.
It's like similar to revaluation, certain like floods or storms that come up, which are true emergencies, but there's certain things that are categorized as a five-year emergency or a three-year emergency, so you're not spending it all in one year, so even though you knew about it--
Right. And that's what, and I read, I read the statute and I know you could do it, I just didn't understand why, so that's, all right, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Kadeesh?
No comment for the moment.
Councilmember Wetzel?
I would just like to commend Ms. Weedbrook and her staff for an outstanding Vernon Day. The weather was beautiful, the crowd was excellent, the vendors, anyone that you talked to had nothing but positive comments about the day, so congratulations to Ms. and her staff.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
I too. I was there, I think we walked around, it seemed like everybody having a great time. Weather was wonderful. Good afternoon. I'd also like to thank the two members who were appointed to the various committees, Siegel and Ms. Pfeifer. Getting involved in these types of committees, especially areas that can, you know, generate somewhat of a problem with how things are perceived is very challenging, to say the least. Thank you so much for being willing to undertake those responsibilities. We need people of your caliber to help serve the community and make sure you're doing an outstanding job. I'd also like to point out that I was privileged to be on the dais for, our mayor made comments at Royal Day Exercises, and he commented about what was taking place with the VFW. I think this is a situation that needs to have some clarification, not so much the VFW, but what we as a council, we as an administration, the mayor as an administration can and cannot do, and I think he was very, very clear. His comments were very clear that--
Did you want to--
By law, we are not allowed to provide any direct contribution to private entities, and that they need only avail themselves--
Those words--
--the ready year within the township to see if they can be helped. Certainly, nobody that I know wants to see these, this organization pass from our midst, but it's up to them to work, and I'm happy that they've taken the opportunity to save the post, develop the program to save the post, and hopefully they'll be very, very successful. You know, the public needs to understand that council and the administration are strict by public law about what we can and cannot do. Thank you, Council President.
Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you. See you in the morning.